All right, if everybody's ready, we'll go ahead and call the Tuesday, October 6th, Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces. That'll be followed by an invocation by Chaplain William Mead with Indian River Estates East, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Dylan Rinegold County Attorney. If everybody would please rise and join me in a moment of silent reflection.
We thank you, our Father, for this beautiful day and for this place that we can come. And, Father, we are here to not only welcome you, but to honor those who have fought for our country and who protect our community. Lord, we don't know what we would do without the police and the firemen and EMTs and others that keep us safe, and when we are injured or sick, they take care of us. And so, we're grateful, and we lift them before you and ask, Father, that you would bless them today. Thank you for these commissioners and the decisions that are made here today. We'd ask, Father, that in all the decisions that are made, that you would be involved in each one of those, and that you would lead and guide us. We do thank you for our country and ask, Lord, that in all of the things that are going on, that are sometimes distasteful to us, that you would come around and bring us back to the place where it's in God that we trust. Thank you for everything that you've done for us and for this great room and for these leaders, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Flesher with a second by Commissioner Zork. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to proclamations and presentations. Our first is going to be a presentation of the Indian River County Community Needs Assessment by Mr. Jeffrey R. Pickering, President and CEO of Indian River Community Foundation. Welcome, Mr. Pickering.
May I remove my mask to speak? Is that all right? Great, thanks. Otherwise, I'll be mumbling. And I've got copies of an executive summary. I'm not sure if I can leave them here or if I can hand them to somebody. Thanks. Well, good morning. As the chairwoman said, I'm Jeff Pickering, President and CEO of Indian River Community Foundation. I'm privileged to preside over an organization that's been around since 2008 with a mission of building a better community through donor-driven philanthropy. We serve generous individuals and families in Indian River County who really want to make to make work to use philanthropy to make this community better. And that's either because they have a family tradition of giving, they have an important cause, a field of interest like children or youth, or maybe a specific organization like the Boys and Girls Club, or they've got this desire to leave a legacy. Our Legacy Society is named after our dear friend Alma Lee Loy, and there are more than 70 individuals and families who've made provisions in their estate plans to leave resources to support the good in this community forever. The product that we use typically is a donor-advised fund. Clients can make a gift of any type of asset: cash, appreciated stock, real property, antique collections, antique cars, you name it, pretty much. If we can't take it, then you probably can't give it under the IRS rules. They have the opportunity to hire local financial advisors to invest their accounts, or they use a chance to use one of our pools, and then they pay the community foundation a fee. We're a not-for-profit corporation, but we charge a fee for the services to help our clients make informed decisions about giving their money away to the various causes in this community. Collectively, we have about, we've raised about $160 million in our very short 12-year history, and we've given away about 70 million of that. That's 8,700 grants across the spectrum of organizations that range from animals to religious-related causes in this community. And in addition to serving clients, one of our other primary strategic priorities is to develop shared, develop and share community knowledge. We have the most comprehensive online database of nonprofit organizations in Indian River County. It's our online nonprofit search. It lists more than 125 local charities where individuals can go online. You can do this from the comfort of your own home and find, learn about, and give directly to the causes that support this community. If you're old school like me and you want to actually hold something, we partner with the Vero Beach Magazine to produce the annual guide to better giving. That was just actually released this past weekend, and it lists many of the organizations who meet the highest standards of transparency and accountability and are doing really important work in our community. We also try to help people not just give money away during their lifetime, but as part of their estate plans, and so, we have a comprehensive resource, ircflegacy.org, that offers a free wills planning guide, and it provides people with information about how to make up a quest or do something more complex out of their estate to support the causes that they love in perpetuity. So, in this area of sharing and developing community knowledge, one of the projects that the community foundation took the lead on by convening a number of other funders, six funders, including the county and participants that include the United Way, the Department of Health in Florida, Johns Island Community Service League, Johns Island Foundation, and Head Heart Hands of Indian River Club. We hired an independent research consultant and essentially engaged last summer, beginning in the, in the, in the summer at Indian River State College, the Mueller Campus, 50 charities showed up and learned how to basically work with us to conduct surveys to understand the specific needs and perceptions of this community. And we were able to accomplish a convenient sample of our population. 1,400 surveys were administered in English, Spanish, and Creole, and then we conducted an additional 12 focus groups to basically learn more about people's perceptions of the needs in this community. The domains, we had to limit it to a certain number of domains, and we limited it to those where we see the most amount of need and, quite frankly, the most amount of charitable interest in our community: to children, economic opportunity, employment, health, housing, and seniors. And that process lasted a year. At the end of our season, right around Memorial Day, we ended up publishing the entire study, which is available on the community foundation's website at ircfcommunity, ircommunityfoundation.org. And then we've published, which I've just handed out, the executive summary. And so, I'd like to begin by sharing some key insights that we found overlooking at the course of the last year. And this, to remind you all, is the first time that this comprehensive community needs assessment has been done in more than 10 years. And a lot of credit goes to the members of the staff, the Health Department, and the various funders, and quite a number of participants from the county that provided additional assistance to get this thing done. I'd like to think that in the near term, we could actually do this more frequently so that we can actually make this more readily accessible on a regular basis. So, the key insights that we found first is that in Indian River County, this may be no surprise, living in the Sunshine State, but here in our county specifically, we have an aging, a rapidly aging and diversifying population, we have increasing wealth disparity, we've made some progress in some key areas, but there are persistent problems. And while charity helps, we've got an incredibly generous community. And philanthropy matters with promising practices or proven programs that can help address long-term issues. Public dollars effectively are incredibly essential to the quality of life in this community. So, let's dig into the details of each category. First and foremost, we have a rapidly aging and diversifying population. Adults 65 and older are the fastest-growing age group, and we anticipate that by 2040, 36% of our entire population will be adults over the age of 65. So, from a planning perspective, thinking about the logistics of community services and housing and transportation, and, quite frankly, community assistance that might need to be provided to these, this particular population is really critical. In addition to that, from a diversification standpoint, Hispanics and Latinx are the fastest-growing minority group in Indian River County. We expect that 18%, perhaps more, will be of this race and ethnicity by 2040. And that makes a difference specifically in the ways that our children are taught, our medical services are provided, the way our first responders interact with a population whose first language may, in fact, not be English, or whose cultural practices may actually be different from the majority population. The second category is an increasing wealth disparity. You may know this. It's been reported in publications as prominent as the Wall Street Journal that Indian River County is one of the top 10 richest counties in the state of Florida. However, Indian River County also has the 10th-largest income gap between the top 1% and the bottom 99% of earners out of 3,061 counties in the United States. There are top 10 lists that you want to be on. This, from our perspective, is not a top 10 list that we'd like to be on. It is a fact that 50% of the county households live in poverty or one paycheck away. The cost of living in Indian River County, essentially, to the poverty level for a family of four is $43,000 per year. According to MIT and the resources that they have available, from an affordability standpoint, it actually costs a family of four $63,000 to live in this community. Now, when I moved here five years ago from Bakersfield, California, knowing that this is a resort and an agricultural community mostly, my perception was, well, of course, that's the case, and most of those folks probably are service workers or maybe people that come from the agricultural economic sector. But in fact, this also includes a number of our first-time teachers in our school district that earn the basic cost of living in our community. The tax millage that was just renewed hopefully will be used to address, used to address some of this gap, but it certainly isn't enough, and it's an issue that we're going to have to take a look at if we want all of our community residents to actually experience good quality of life. We have made some progress in our community with respect to some of the priorities that we looked at. Infant mortality has decreased. One example of a public-private partnership that has made a significant difference in that area began with the Indian River County Healthy Start Coalition. It's now been assumed by TICs and TEANS. It's their program called Healthy Families, where they work with more than 100 of the 1,000 births that are taking place in our community that are considered high-risk, and they step in from an early point, as soon as pregnancy is detected, all the way through age two, to ensure that mom, parents, child are bonding, receiving their appropriate milestones from a health perspective, and then moving towards developmental stages that can get them to vibrancy and beyond age two. And our infant mortality rate has specifically decreased across the county, specifically in that area, because of the public-private partnership that's thrived under those organizations. In our community, we have kindergarten readiness and grade-level reading that has improved. Much of the work can be attributed initially to the good teachers that we have in our community and the parents that are engaged, and also, of the last several years, our community's literacy initiative, Moonshot Moment. Now, with a superintendent that is focused on making all schools, A-rated schools in the near future, this is something that we expect to continue in the future. And then finally, we have more access to mental health and substance abuse recovery services, and a big driver of this has been the work of the Mental Health Collaborative in Indian River County, to make sure that we have a quality mental health continuum that matches the world-class quality of direct healthcare continuum that we've developed in partnership with the Cleveland Clinic. However, we do have some persistent problems. In our community, there are still too many poor families who are unable to secure a living wage, employment, affordable, and safe housing. There are still too many children who are not ready for kindergarten and not reading by third grade. Specifically among our teen population, we still have too many, an inordinate number of students who are vaping, who are pregnant, who are missing school, or who are not graduating. And this gets worse if you look at the Hispanic, Latinx population or the African-American population. We still have too many children and adults who lack affordable health, dental, and mental health care. Now, while this may be actually not a reality in terms of the availability of public dollars because of places like the hospital district, the perception of what it might cost by making a visit to the doctor is something that we heard come through the focus groups. So, we have a real need to educate people about the availability of primary care in our community and what that means for them, and that it doesn't necessarily have to result in catastrophe. And then finally, we have too many low-income seniors who live alone, who are socially isolated, and who are engaging in risky behaviors like smoking and heavy drinking at sometimes three times the state average. And ultimately, that puts them at risk of adverse health incidents in the home. I want to point out that the large majority of those low-income seniors living alone happen to be women. I think of my grandmother, you know, who was 90-year-old, 90 years old, 90 years old when she passed a couple of years ago. Fortunately, I was able to be on the same coast to be near her in her last couple of years. She was surrounded by 18 grandkids, five adult kids, and 30-some great-grandkids. There are a significant number of low-income senior women in our community who have nobody, and we have to take a look at that issue. So, when it comes to the persistent problems, in the report, we actually went deeper and looked at the individual perceptions, and I won't go through all of those, but we've got a number of examples that I've just highlighted a few as to why we need to be able to continue addressing some of these issues. Now, in a community like Indian River County, where we have so many generous people and we have so many nonprofits working to address the quality of life in our community, charity does help. Last year, there were 557 501(c)(3) nonprofits that were registered in Indian River County. $220 million was donated to them, mostly from generous individuals and families. Only 112 of those earn more than $50,000 a year, however. So, the PTAs and the civic groups who pass the hat and cover the cost of coffee with their budgets don't fit into that 100, 100 charity category. And just 10% of those organizations have 12-month savings on their balance sheets. Now, this is not something that is a death sentence. It's an opportunity for the community to take the long view, and that's why the community foundation has been encouraging charities and donors to plan their gifts out of their estates rather than just rely on fundraisers and golf tournaments to be able to support their operations. But we live in an incredibly generous community where, in all cases of all household income levels, we give about twice the national average of household giving. So, charity does help. Philanthropy matters. Oftentimes, we look at the community and community funders, and we say, there are grants available. So, charities, spend your time writing applications to the community foundation or the United Way or any of the other funders in the community. The main purpose of philanthropy is to bring ideas to the table. You know, organizations like GYAC, who saw a challenging issue with young black boys in their community, came to the community foundation five years ago, and they said, we've got this idea. We think we could launch a Boys to Men to Greatness program with a grant of $50,000 and pair up young African-American boys with mentors and help them persist through high school and ultimately on to vocational trades or college. And that program was launched by philanthropy, and it's been sustained as a result of their most recent campaign. Philanthropy builds promising practices. We've worked in partnership with a recipient of some of the CSAC money, Child Care Resources, to help them go beyond their mission. They serve about 125 individual children and their families, who are working families, low-income, who qualify for their programs. But many kids in our community who are preschool age don't have access to preschool, or they're cared for by grandma or auntie, or they're in a home daycare program, or they're in a private-sector preschool program that pays their teachers less than what the Target or the Lowe's pays their stock workers. And so, the risk is that these folks are making a low income, and they don't have access to professional development. So, Child Care Resources came to the community foundation and said, for a grant of $25,000, we'd like to actually start offering professional development to any teacher that teaches preschool in the community. And we did that one year. And then we hired a coach, and we paid for both the training and the coach. And then the year after that, we sustained the support for the coach. And what that's allowed them to do is to reach not just the dozens of teachers under their roof, but hundreds of preschool teachers affecting thousands of families in our community. This is a promising practice that if additional funding were available from a public source could be sustained. And then finally, as I mentioned before, philanthropy helps sustain organizations and programs we love through planned gifts for endowment. We have about $50 billion that's going to transfer between households by 2016 in Indian River County, and that is the largest untapped source of funding to support and sustain our nonprofits. We stopped asking the charities that apply to the community foundation, when we give them a grant, how are you going to sustain your program? Because we were getting creative writing exercises. We actually asked them, what's your plan to help your most generous, longtime contributors to make gifts out of their estate to sustain their annual contributions? And if they don't know, we'll teach them how. Those are the things that philanthropy can do. But make no mistake, if charity helps and philanthropy matters, public dollars are essential. Most recently, we had an Indian River County hospital district that was successful in helping to broker the relationship between the community and Cleveland Clinic. And we have a world-class hospital system here in Indian River County. And that soon will free up additional dollars so that $13 million in annual financial services will be available to support organizations providing healthcare services to Indian River County residents. That's about the equivalent of a distribution of a $250 million endowment. And that is something that, assuming the voters continue to support it, will be there as long as we need it to care for the needs of our community. You all know that there was a millage that was just renewed for the school district, $9 to $11 million dedicated for the four years beginning in 2021. The cost of that was roughly, you know, maybe four pizzas, $100 a household, and the impact of that is going to make sure that that gap between teachers who are paid a poverty wage and a living wage is closed, that students have social and emotional wellness services, and that technology, specifically now during COVID, can be increased. We've deferred the decision on the Children's Trust measure, but that will come up again. There are advocates who want to make sure that, just like healthcare services with the taxing district that's available for the hospital district, the children also have equal access to sustainable funding. And that will be something that essentially will be required if we're going to try to maintain the quality of life in our community. Our foundation is proud to associate ourselves with all the organizations that were involved in completing this needs assessment. We've learned a lot, and it's going to continue to shape the community foundation's work for years to come. We encourage anyone who wants to learn more about how they can apply these learnings to their own work in giving money away, whether it's at the public level or the private level, to contact the foundation. And more importantly, to keep working together with philanthropy and public sector to make this community better. I'd be glad to answer any questions or observations that you might have before wrapping up.
Thank you, Mr. Pickering. Commissioners, are there any questions on the needs assessment? I see this is the executive summary. Are you guys going to be providing the full?
The full, the full report has been provided to the county. It's available on our website. We've sent, I think, copies of the publication. We, excuse me, we'd certainly be glad to send each individual a copy of the printed 100-page report.
Anybody from the public that might want to see it can access it through your website, then?
Yes, it's available in English, Spanish, and Creole on the website.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
We appreciate your partnership with all the organizations and with the county to make this happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next presentation is going to be presentation of a proclamation recognizing the month of October 2020 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This will be presented to Linda Henninger, and is Dr. Teresa Albizu here? Yes? Wonderful, with Safe Space. Welcome, ladies. It's my honor to read a proclamation recognizing the month of October 2020 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas each day in America, four women are murdered by their intimate partners. And whereas each day in America, an average of 20 people every minute are abused by their intimate partners. And whereas, one in three American women and one in four men have experienced some form of intimate partner violence. And whereas, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides all Americans the opportunity to recommit to ensure that every relationship be violence-free. And whereas, in Indian River County, Safe Space Incorporated joins forces with law enforcement, victim service programs, criminal justice officials, social service organizations, and concerned citizens to fight domestic violence and provide all domestic violence victims a safe place where they can live with respect, resources, restoration, and justice. Together, their commitment and compassion help to ensure that our community steps forward to support domestic violence victims in need. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners that the board recognizes the month of October 2020 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, advocates for relationships rooted in trust, respect, and equality, and expresses our sincere appreciation for those committed to promoting peace and preventing domestic violence in our community. Adopted the sixth day of October 2020 and signed by all five county commissioners. I just want to welcome you and thank you for all that you're doing in the community. And if you'd like to tell us a little bit about Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we'd love to hear.
Thank you. We appreciate the time, and we appreciate that this county commission has recognized October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'm Linda Henninger. I am in my eighth year as a board member. I'm a past president of the board, and I live in Vero Beach. I'm joined by current and past board members and Teresa Albizu, who's our CEO, Janet Farn and Dyer, who's on the staff. And Teresa, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Yeah. Give me a minute. I have been given the opportunity to serve as Chief Executive Officer of Safe Space, and after having completed four months in this position, I began to contemplate what the overall impact that domestic violence has in our society and how we should address this historically taboo subject. In addition to the obvious humanistic and psychological impact on the victims, there is also an enormous economic impact on society from domestic violence. One quarter of employed women in the United States report that domestic violence has affected their work performance. And this is no surprise when we consider that one in three women and one in four men have been victims of domestic violence in their lifetime. According to the Journal of Occupational Psychology, approximately eight million days of paid work are lost due to domestic violence incidents. It is estimated that the combination of higher medical costs and lost productivity equate to over $8 billion in annual cost to this country, $8 billion annually. We must recognize that a domestic violence pandemic has existed long before the COVID-19 outbreak, and this public health issue has only exacerbated the incidence of intimate partner violence. During fiscal year 2019, 2020, Safe Space provided services to 144 residents of Indian River County, consisting of 114 women and 30 children. These individuals received a total of 2,334 outreach program services from our domestic violence advocates. I believe that we should all agree that violence is wrong and must be prosecuted accordingly. Not only are the direct victims impacted, but also family members, taxpayers, the economy, and the smallest and most vulnerable are children. Domestic violence is a learned behavior, and it has a multigenerational transmission process. I mention this because recently, we welcomed a survivor and her children to our shelter who had, over 15 years ago, come to our shelter as a child with her own mother. Domestic violence is Domestic violence is a serious national, societal, and economic issue that everyone has a role in eradicating. Often witnesses are afraid to speak up and get involved. I therefore ask that each one of us here do our best to talk about this serious issue, to encourage those in need to reach out to Safe Space, to seek the support they need, and transition to an independent life free of violence. It is our moral duty to do so. Thank you for your support and for this proclamation.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? All right. Do you guys want to come? Oh, go ahead.
Eric, you're going to be wearing the red shoes this year?
Yeah, the red shoes are, I'm sure we're February, we'll be in them in February.
In February, okay, all right.
So we'll do that again. But on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, you know that we responded last year to, on average, about two domestic violence calls per day here in Indian River County. And we know that this is one of the most underreported crimes out there. And so, from our perspective, not a day goes by that domestic violence doesn't happen right here in Indian River County. And COVID has only made this worse, and we know this, not just here locally, but nationally and globally, which is just terrible. And so, we really appreciate that you take a moment to stop and pause and think about the victims, think about what's happening in our community, and that we rededicate ourselves to preventing domestic violence in the future. And hopefully, we can eradicate this from our society. Thank you, guys.
Eric, I know that things I've been hearing are concerns is, not only is it the domestic partner abuse, but also the child abuse has gone up because the kids are home more now and the overall stress in the whole family life. Are we seeing that here in the county?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Child abuse is a component of domestic violence, as well as child-on-child. So siblings, you know, extended family members, because of financial hard times, we have people living together that maybe aren't necessarily even family. But if they're living together and violence occurs, it's domestic violence. So, very challenging times, but we're working hard to prevent it, do everything we can. And of course, we appreciate your efforts in helping us with this project. Safe Space will always take donations. They'll take furniture. We've got a thrift shop. We've got plenty of different ways to help out with this problem. So hopefully, people will come out and assist with all of our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
All right. Did you guys want to come in, grab your proclamation?
Thank you for all you do. You guys want to get a picture?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
I think there's a piece of tape on the floor that's kind of the middle.
Cue line. Great picture of Brian's fingers there, right?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next presentation is going to be of a proclamation designating October as Manufacturing Month in Indian River County. This will be presented by Commissioner O'Brien, Ms. Helene Castleton of Indian River County Chamber of Commerce. Helene and crew, welcome.
Good morning. All right. This is a proclamation designated in October 2020 as Manufacturing Month in Indian River County, Florida. Whereas, October 2, 2020, is National Manufacturing Day, the kickoff to Manufacturing Month, recognizing the manufacturing industry as vital to the health of our county, the state of Florida, and our entire nation. And whereas, manufacturing is one of the cornerstones of our local economy, helping to sustain our quality of life, as well as foster a solid and diversified tax base in Indian River County. And whereas, as our local, state, and national economies begin to recover from the devastating effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, a healthy and sustainable economy is crucial to these efforts. And whereas, manufacturing provides over 2,300 high-wage and high-skilled jobs in Indian River County, with 129 manufacturing firms paying an average annual wage of $54,000, higher than our current average wage of $44,900. And whereas, we join the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce, the Treasure Coast Manufacturers Association, local educators, and the many volunteers in supporting the manufacturing boot camp program, encouraging students to consider manufacturing as a career pathway. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners in Indian River County, Florida, that the month of October 2020 be designated as Manufacturing Month in Indian River County. And the Board encourages all residents to take time to acknowledge Indian River County manufacturers and their employees for the positive economic impact they have in our county, the state of Florida, and our nation. Adopted the sixth day of October 2020, signed, endorsed by all five county commissioners. And Helene, I know you have a big event coming up here to help celebrate Manufacturing Month, but in the year of 2020, nothing is normal. So instead of a luncheon, I hear we're going to have a breakfast, maybe. Is that untapped? Yeah.
And only 100 people. So yes, thank you for bringing that up. Industry appreciation is coming up at the end of the month. So we appreciate y'all's support on that. I did want to mention a few things about Manufacturing Day, Manufacturing Month. It is a national recognition taking place throughout our United States. Pre-pandemic, a lot of the manufacturers around the country, in here locally, would open their doors to visitors to demonstrate the potential of modern manufacturing and to foster an interest, as Commissioner O'Brien said, in manufacturing careers. A lot of people still think that manufacturing is dark, it's dangerous, and it's designed for only low-skilled workers. Couldn't be further from the truth. Manufacturing Day addresses this misperception. Today's manufacturing environment is highly technical, includes robotics and automated machinery. Plus, the economic impact of manufacturing is quite significant. This industry sector has the highest multiplier effect of any economic sector. For every dollar spent in manufacturing, $1.48 is added back into our local economy. And I would want to, I do want to take a second to do a shout out to some of our local manufacturers who really stepped up in the early days of the pandemic. We put a word out that some of our healthcare workers were looking for protective gear. They had a hard time finding it, as you remember. Piper Aircraft produced 76,000 face shields, 9,000 per day on three production assembly lines. These were distributed locally and globally to 180 organizations around the world. They also made intubator boxes for Cleveland Clinic. Novorania, which is a manufacturer at the south end of the county, they make yacht tenders, very customized upscale yacht tenders, I might add. They produce cotton surgical masks that were also distributed to Cleveland Clinic and our healthcare providers around the county. I-1 Moto, which is a small manufacturer in Roseland, they design and manufacture road racing, body working gear. They too produce surgical gowns for our healthcare workers. Drought equipment donated cash so people could buy that protective gear. So I'm really proud. So we do have guests here today, and I would like to make some introductions. We have, starting over here on your left, Carlo Caccio, who is the Director of Novorania. We have Mark Caslow, who is the owner of Dragonfly Boatworks over on Aviation Boulevard. We have Jim Funk, who is the CFO at Piper Aircraft. And then my colleague, John Carapi, who is our Business Retention Manager at the Chamber. So thank you for joining us in recognizing the importance of the manufacturing industry sector here in Indian River County and throughout the country. And stay safe. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Helene. You want to come on up?
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody. He needs more lessons on this. All right. Our next presentation is going to be of a proclamation in recognition of Fire Prevention Week 2020, which is October 4 through the 10th. This is going to be presented by Commissioner Flesher to Joseph Johnson and our EMS staff. Thank you. It's good to see you all here today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. Look at this team we have here. Come on down. Okay. Well, thank you for being here today and receiving this proclamation. The proclamation is formerly known as Battery and Fire Extinguisher Month. But there's a whole lot more to fire prevention, which I know we're going to hear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. The proclamation we just follows, in recognition of Fire Prevention Week of 2020, October 4 through the 10th. Whereas, the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all Indian River County residents and visitors. And Indian River County's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injury through prevention and education. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the home fires have killed more than 2,630 people in the United States in the year 2017. According to the National Fire Protection Association, with the Departments of the United States responding to 357,000 home fires. And whereas, two of every five home fires start in the kitchen. Most of unattended cooking and in Indian River County's residents should observe the safe cooking practices by staying in the kitchen when cooking, keep three-foot kid-free zone around the cooking areas, and keeping anything flammable away from the cooking surface. Whereas, residents who have planned and practiced in the home and fire escape, and have their plans and have working smoke alarms, are more prepared than, and more likely to survive in a fire. Indian River County's residents are responsible to public education measures and can take steps to increase the safety for the fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, in 2020, Fire Prevention Week theme, registered trademark, serve up fire safety in the kitchen, effectively serves as a reminder for all of us to stay safe and to use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board does hereby proclaim October 4 through the 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this county. And we urge that all people in Indian River County and check their kitchens for fire hazards, to use safe cooking practices, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Indian River County Fire Rescue Services. Duly adopted the sixth day of October 2020, signed by all five of your county commissioners. Team, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Boss.
On behalf of Chief Tadstone and myself and my bureau staff, we'd like to thank you for supporting this proclamation for 2020 Fire Prevention Week, as what was in the proclamation. It's serving up fire protection in the kitchen. Each year, we see between 2,000 and 3,000 deaths because of home fires. And of those home fires, 40% are caused by the kitchen, whether it's unattended cooking or improper cooking. So we thank you for this. We thank you for the opportunity to get the message out. It makes it easier on us when we go out to teach the citizens and visitors of our county fire safety. It's been a rough year trying to do public presentations due to COVID, but we have overcome and adapted and are doing quite well. So again, thank you for your support.
Anything else, boss?
Anything else?
Are you guys doing any activities this month to highlight Fire Safety Month?
Well, yes, we have quite a few events scheduled with the six-foot social distancing and the mask and everything like that. So it's a little more difficult, but we are able to do it.
Fantastic.
You could do me a big favor if you would send a note home to my wife that saying in, you know, recognition of Fire Prevention Week, that you order me to stay completely out of the kitchen.
Yes, sir.
Could I get that note from you, like a little?
My house, when I cook, if the smoke detectors go off, you know dinner's ready.
Yep.
Just a couple of things that I was thinking about there. And here in the state of Florida, so many have electric ranges as opposed to gas ranges. And we always equate fires being initiated by flame. Is there, is there any other concern? I mean, I think there's a false sense of security about electric ranges because they do cook, and they do develop the same heat necessary to cook food. So they can initiate a fire just as equally as a flame range, correct?
Yes, Commissioner. Heat is heat. Whether it's flame or a object, it'll, it'll pass the heat along to whatever's touching it. If it's cloth, it'll burn. If it's steel, it'll melt. So basically, it doesn't matter whether it's flame or an element, it will produce a fire.
And so we want everybody to check their little gauges on their fire extinguishers that are readily available in the kitchen?
Yes, sir.
Make sure they're on green?
Recommend changing out your fire extinguishers every year. That's the manufacturer's recommendation. And changing your smoke detector battery every time the clock changes. They do have new 10-year batteries, which we do recommend. They're more expensive, but it kind of leaves the guesswork out of it. So you're clear for approximately 10 years.
And it's a very inexpensive investment for a whole lot of return.
Yes, sir.
A fire extinguisher's about $20.
Yeah, at the most.
Yeah. So thank you. And thank you, team, for what you do each and every day.
Thank you very much. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning, all.
Been a while since we all got together and took pictures and stand together. Shift to the right. Right on this side. That's the one.
Keep moving, Dan. Keep moving. Keep going.
That's good. Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you again.
What you do every day.
All right. We do have a couple of informational items I wanted to highlight. Mr. Timothy Eric Martin is retiring from the Department of Emergency Services Fire Rescue Division with 30 years of service. So congratulations to Mr. Martin. We wish him well in his retirement. And we also have Mr. Kenneth Hinshaw, who is retiring from the Department of General Services with the Sandridge Golf Club with 17 years of service. So we'd like to thank him for his service and wish him well in his retirement as well. And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anybody from the consent, or anybody wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda? Anybody from the public wishing to pull anything from consent? Anybody on Zoom?
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Flesher with a second by Commissioner Zork. Any further discussion? Sing non, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, all opposed? I'm sorry. Motion carries. All right. With that, we'll move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is consideration to adopt an ordinance amending County Code, Chapter 3 of 8, Indian River County Local Housing Assistance Program, and to adopt an updated resolution regarding Affordable Housing Advisory Committee membership. Gentlemen, welcome.
Bill Matson, Community Development Director. And let me introduce Bill Schute, Chief of-
As you stated, let me go to the next slide. Issue before you today is really an amendment of Chapter 308 of the Indian River County Code, and it deals with affordable housing, and specifically some of the activities of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. So the purpose of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is required by Florida statutes, it's for jurisdictions that receive state funding for affordable housing, that's primarily the SHIP program, State Housing Initiative Partnership Program, and that's, the SHIP program's been in place since the early 90s, 92, 93 timeframe. Triannually, the A-hack is, has been required to review the county's established policies and procedures, ordinances, land development regulations, and adopt a local government comprehensive plan, and to recommend specific actions or initiatives to encourage or facilitate affordable housing. This is all text from the state statute, while protecting the ability of the property to appreciate in value. Now, membership requirements are outlined in statutes, and we'll go over that briefly in the presentation. So, we cut out some extra slides, but again, the A-hack really started back in the early 90s, it got dissolved, but then it really came back around 2008 with House Bill 1375 of 2007. And that's when the state again required establishment of A-hacks. The county established a 16-member A-hack, 11 state categories were included in there in the statute, plus five municipal representatives and one non-voting Board of County Commissioners liaison. The membership really, it's, you know, it depends on the legislature, some things change here or there, but it changed periodically. In 2016, the minimum of eight and maximum of 11 members was established, and at least six of those members had to be from the 11 categories listed in statute. The county's current A-hack includes 11 voting members, six from the state categories, plus five municipal representatives, so that's 11 voting members and the one non-voting Board of County Commissioners liaison. So in 2020, effectively, there's House Bill 1339, which we'll go over in a little bit more detail in a couple of slides, but effectively required that the BCC member now be a voting member and not a liaison. So this is just a slide briefly, you know, we covered some of this issue, gosh, December of 2019, where we were, you know, cutting down the size of the A-hack, and showed this slide back then, but this is the list in the state statute of what those 11 categories are, and we have to have six from that, the top six shown are the categories we have on A-hack now. The remaining committee members, as mentioned, we have five town and city representatives, plus the BCC liaison, non-voting member. So in House Bill 1339, adopted this year, the Florida Governor ultimately signed it, signed it, and it really just, not only the membership requirements, but it also modified some of the, really the directives and responsibilities. So now the A-hack must contain one local elected official from the Board of County Commissioners, so that member must be a voting member, and that member must attend biannual regional workshops through the State Affordable Housing Catalyst Program. And, you know, in terms of commitment, and this is more of a regular standing committee now, you know, it used to be triannually, every three years, now it's, the state's requiring annually that the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee continue to study the issues of affordable housing and make recommendations. So again, we, at the staff level, you know, we were in contact with the state, and, you know, we were hopeful we can keep the existing structure initially, but they advised us that the BCC member had to be a voting member, so that's why we're here today. So on this slide, we're showing the Board of County Commissioner member sliding into the 11th spot, and staff did coordinate with the Town of Orchid, as well as Town and Indian River Shores, and came up with a proposal, and they were graciously supportive of it, that the Town of Orchid being the smallest community, that they would switch to the liaison role and be a voting member in the absence of the Town and Indian River Shores member. So in conclusion, the new A-hack related requirements shown in Chapter 308 of the ordinance require that the A-hack meet on a more regular basis, annually instead of triannually, analyze affordable housing and set up strategies and local laws and policies, and develop recommendations, and the BCC representative on A-hack changed from non-voting liaison to a voting member, the Town of Orchid to shift to a liaison, a voting member in absence of the Town and Indian River Shores member. So staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners take public comments, this is a public hearing, approve the proposed amendment to County Code Chapter 308 by adopting the proposed ordinance and adopt the proposed A-hack resolution attached to Staff Agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for using "gosh" instead of another exclamation during the presentation.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions of staff?
I have one. Bill, could you go back to the second to the last slide where you had the Indian River, or Orchid and Indian River Shores of how, where the commissioner becomes the 11th? Let's see, can also serve as an alternate voting member for the Town of, so the Town of Indian River Shores would still retain their number 10 position, correct? Because they've been very proactive, they've set up their own affordable housing subcommittee within their, their community, so we want to make sure they stay fully, fully represented. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for that.
All right, Commissioners, yes, Commissioner, sorry.
Schute, you probably don't have the number offhand, but do you have an estimate of how many times between 2008 and through 2018, the A-hack did not have a quorum at the meeting?
Oh, yeah, that's, there were quite a few times in recent years, but going back further, yeah, I'd have to dig and find, but certainly there's occasions where that's happened.
I'll bring that back up again after the public comment when we discuss most of the Commissioners, thank you very much.
All right, if there's no other comments from Commissioners at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Welcome, sir.
Hello, Commissioners, Chairwoman? David Surtar, Fruitland Park, Florida, I filled out the card. I'm a florist, I work in bereavement. You know, we're all going to die, I'm worried about our kids' future, and this bill, or this ordinance, great thing for housing for seniors. You know, I might be appointed by the Governor to the St. John's River Water Management District, I just got off the phone with Mr. Lambert, the ombudsman, Indian River is part of that. I'm a very concerned citizen, is public speaking, Marion County, Lake County, Southern County, Volusia County, Brevard County this afternoon, better than the papers, Cousin Neil was a conservation police captain, Uncle Paul was the L.R. Ray Sorcherman, 1954, 1962, under Governor Williams, out of Illinois. My dad, a principal at the same school he went to, elementary, I got a school board meeting this afternoon also. You know, I've been filmed many times, and I'm treated with kid gloves in Orlando, I've got the pin of the Mayor of Orlando, law enforcement, I carry a prayer book with me, elders, we have to take care of. It's our country, you know, we got to thank the officers that take care. I may be appointed to the St. John's River Water Management District, I've been there, the Governor has cleaned house, I worked with the Governor, Lexi Machua, the First Lady's aide, but I turned in paperwork in Tallahassee, Senator Bexley calls me his buddy. You know, a house divided against itself cannot stand, and our country's in trouble, and I am a Trump supporter. I've written a letter to Pope Francis.
Sir, sir, is this have anything to do with the public hearing on the ordinance in front of us? If you could please?
You are leaving, you ought to, they ought to, won't do it again, and I think I agree with you.
All right, thank you so much for your comment. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions? Yes, Commissioners?
Not a question, I'm going to be voting against this, and the reason is because too many times people take, basically the Florida legislators, take good, decent committees and absolutely destroy them for different reasons, that have nothing to do with substance and the substance of the committee, but has to do something with politics. Going back to one of the committees that I've been chairman on for years, the Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board, that board does good things for an important thing, the transportation, the bus system of Indian River County, which serves a lot of needy people. But the state keeps on overloading it with things, and in May of 2019, we had to vote on another state mandate where we had to change our bylaws in order to add one more member to the committee. So we now have 18 members of that committee, yes, from all over the state, some of them come from Lee's Palm Beach, some maybe further away. Half of the four meetings each year are basically pro forma meetings meant to satisfy bureaucratic things mandated, mandated from Tallahassee. So people will spend four hours transporting themselves to a meeting where you, which lasts 30 to 40 minutes, which is basically a pro forma exercise, which to me, undercuts the efforts of every good serving member. I asked the question of Mr. Schute on the Affordable Housing Committee, Committee meeting between 2008 to 2018, because that committee often didn't have quorums because it wasn't doing anything of substance, and that's unfortunate, but you have people who want to do something good, but are faced with just bureaucratic BS and get discouraged. When we first re, sort of reestablished the Affordable Housing Committee with great goals and objectives, and started doing some good things, we had a problem getting a quorum because so many of the past members that were still on the committee didn't show up because they thought that would be acting like the old one. When you look at some of the changes today, the A-hack now has to triannually review local policies and mandate changes, and talk about annually, go and talk about the implementation of housing incentives. If we passed a housing incentive in 2020, we might get one example of how that incentive was used. So what's the purpose of trying to analyze something which has a, has a, basically an example of one? You can't make any rational decisions based on that. And so what's going to happen, very clearly to me, is that you're going to have more and more of these pro forma bureaucratic meetings, which are done only to satisfy state statute, not to help the people for whom it was designed. And the state dang, dang well knows that if they want to do something good for affordable housing, they would change the Sodowsky distribution, and they would have that go for affordable housing every freaking year, as opposed to siphon it off for other reasons. So it would be really nice if the state actually did things to help the people for whom the committee was meant to help, and not satisfy some other reasons. So, as someone who often has troubles with committees, this one certainly is incredibly problematic. I think that the, a lot of people, including Mr. Schute and others, have done great work in the last year, year and a half on the Affordable Housing Committee, but to me, this whole thing just undermines that going forward, and takes something which could be good, good and useful for the citizens of Indian River County, and absolutely starts to destroy it. So, that will just explain why I will be voting against this today, Madam Chair.
Chair, in that I may agree with Commissioner Slory in the spirit of his comments, this is kind of a requirement from the state that I think we need to follow, so I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation.
I'll second that, then I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien with a second by Commissioner Zork. Commissioner Zork, comments?
Yes, during some of those same years that were recently discussed, we may have had quorum issues for sure, but sometimes we went an entire calendar year and never met once, period. And I think during a three-year period, we met, for some reason the internet's not allowing me to pull up the committee calendar activity, but it was pathetically small, I mean, like three times in 24 months. We've had an affordable housing problem for a long time, and did not have meetings at all. Now, I don't agree with everything the state makes us do, but it's going to make sure that we at least meet to accomplish some of these objectives. Some of, don't like all of it, but we're, we're kind of required to do it, but we, we were not very attentive to moving the discussion forward, bringing some of the partnerships together, setting the goals which have been done in the last 18 months. We could have did more during that time when there were no meetings, but at least we were able to bring it to a head beginning of last year, and we've had a pretty good and a pretty robust meeting schedule going forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Flesher, any comments? No. All right, we do have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien with a second by Commissioner Zork to move staff recommendations. If there's no further discussion from the Commissioners, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our second public hearing, which is consideration of amendment to land development regulations, changing the list of uses in agricultural zoning districts to prohibit commercial or residential lawn care services, and this is the first of two required public hearings.
Whatever, yeah.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Good morning, Phil Matson, Community Development Director, and we're here to discuss consideration of amendments to the uses in our ag zoning districts, specifically the prohibition of commercial and lawn care services in those districts. And what we've seen increasingly over the years is the establishment of commercial and residential lawn care businesses in our ag districts. And this has created incompatibilities, particularly when they're close to the edge of the urban service boundary, with some of our established uses out there, particularly our residential ranchettes. So that's the background to addressing compatibilities. And for over a year, the Board of County Commissioners, as long, as well as the Agricultural Advisory Committee, our Planning and Zoning Commission, and others have weighed in and conducted public meetings and considered four alternative proposals to amend our county land development regulations, all intended to address the accessory off-site landscaping services in our ag districts, and hopefully head off some of the future incompatibilities. So here's a summary of the four alternative proposals that we've considered to date. The first was presented to the Board of County Commissioners back in 2018, 2019, and I may be a new face to this, but this has been going on for some time, I think the last presenter for this was Roland. And for the first time, what this alternative did was come up with a definition, and this was an amendment to the definition section of our land development regulations, of what off-site landscaping services are. Herefore, we've interpreted it as being accessory to our nursery businesses, so it comes up with a formal definition, and embedded in the definition was some criteria for buffering, it included a minimal parcel size, and that would be 10-acre lots only, also included a operational area of how large the lawn care services could be relative to the nursery. And what was adopted was a 50% rule, such that if you had a 10-acre lot, and six acres of it were under cultivation, you could have three acres devoted to the accessory landscape, off-site landscaping business. So we were told at that point to seek the opinion of the Agricultural Advisory Committee and Planning and Zoning Commission, to take a look at what we've proposed and established criteria, and the criteria were more or less kept intact with the second staff LDR amendment, but we, they added to it the fact that we should probably be getting site plans for these. So a site plan would be a more formal way of saying, how will this operate, where will everything be located in proximity to its neighbors, et cetera. And along with site planning, this would be changed to what's called an administrative permit use in our code, and this would require Planning and Zoning Commission approval. So this was the staff's second alternative LDR amendment, that was worked on sometime last winter, and it was actually brought to you in March of this year. Now, we have two citizen-proposed LDR amendments, and we refer to this, we refer to these after the authors of the amendments, the first we refer to as the Hendrix Proposed LDR Amendment, and this added another level of protection, made it a special exception use. So basically, we have three levels of uses in our zoning districts in our code permitted, that's what we have now, administrative permit, which would require a Planning and Zoning Commission approval and a site plan, and finally, special exception use. These have to go to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the BCC, also require a site plan, and at that point, the BCC would have some latitude in approving or changing the site plan. And then our final one, we refer to as the Simmons Campbell Proposed LDR Amendment, and this eliminates the allowance of off-site accessory landscaping completely. So at the March 3rd meeting, after considering these alternatives, the Board voted to direct staff to draft a new proposed ordinance, this would prohibit lawn maintenance businesses in the ag districts, but it also acknowledged the fact that there's a Florida Right to Farm Act, and with respect to bona fide nurseries, a certain amount of landscaping businesses had the right, under the state law, to continue operating. So this is what the proposed amendment before you looks like, here is our use table, we have these all over our LDRs, on the use table, it specifies types of businesses and activities, then it has a matrix with the districts, and whether or not these are permitted with a P, administrative permit approval required with an A, might have some conditions on it, or special exception, which would come back to the BCC with an S. So, as you can see, we've scratched out off-site landscaping services per your direction in the proposed ordinance. It's important to note that any action we So as you can see, we've we've scratched out off-site landscaping services per your direction in the proposed ordinance. It's important to note that any action we take, existing landscaping businesses are grandfathered in. This is under our Chap. 904 of our land development regulations, which governs our nonconformities, and the conditions on that grandfathering is you can't increase or expand it. So since we'd be taking a use away, they're already allowed to operate there, they're grandfathered in, but they can't make it any worse because it's a nonconformity. They can't expand the business, the footprint, et cetera. And then if they cease operating for a year, they can be terminated. Under state law, when you add a use or take away a use from a zoning district, it requires two public hearings. It also requires that one of those two be held after five PM on a weekday unless the board by a majority plus one votes to hold it during the day or a regular meeting. Therefore, our recommendation is to direct staff to make any changes to the proposed ordinance, effectively eliminating off-site landscaping services in agricultural districts, and also by a vote of four or five members, set the second final adoption hearing for October twentieth at nine AM. So that concludes my presentation. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Phil. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, Madam Chair, yes. Just for Phil on this, you denoted the the term grandfathering, and and yes, that we leave the existing business the way it stands intact, no changes. And I just want to clarify, if for argument's sake, again, development, we're talking about buildings or expansion, if a particular business that was grandfathered in had an increase in equipment, that doesn't count, correct? Additional equipment like mowers or tillers or other equipment that is necessary for the operation of the business?
I'm going to defer to my attorney, but I think you could, as long as the footprint doesn't change, doesn't expand, not any more building or infrastructure is added, I think if you go from three mowers to four mowers, would you consider that, Dylan, an increase? I I think they probably could continue.
So I'm just going straight from 904 expansion. Generally, no conformity shall be enlarged, increased, or changed to a different nonconformity, except upon a determination by the director that the change lessens the degree of nonconformity. So what you're looking at is kind of this, like Phil said, the structure, the property itself, additions, and then it talks about additions to nonconforming structures containing nonconforming uses shall be permitted if the additions to the structures comply with the full setbacks. I think generally what we're talking about here is the structure and the property, not a piece of equipment coming in and out.
Yeah, it's always been my take.
A piece of equipment coming in?
I'm sorry, I think the the focus of the nonconforming statute generally is the footprint of the building, the size of the structure, the use of the property, not a piece of equipment inside the bill, you know?
Because I do have a concern that early this morning, we had given a proclamation on fire safety, and we talked about, brought out, an electric stove is just as dangerous as a gas stove. It's heat, correct? So if the needs of the business change environmentally, as has with the citrus industry and other agricultural elements, if the needs change, then that business that's been grandfathered in may need to change the equipment, change the covering of the equipment, and now what we're doing is allowing them to die on the vine if we don't allow for additions, including protection for those pieces of equipment as well.
So to follow up on that, 904.06 states that repairs, maintenance, and improvements of nonconformities may be carried out. So improvements may be carried out, provided that such work does not increase the cubic content of the building or the ground floor floor or ground area devoted to nonconforming use and does not in any way increase or create a site-related nonconformity. So again, what Phil was talking about is we're focused on the building size, the ground floor area, the property itself, and that an improvement carried out that does not increase those things would be allowed.
And again, final, pole barns count? Pole barns historically do not count in agricultural, but do are pole barns going to be counted as a footprint?
Yeah, I think it would be hard to say if it if a business was operating now without a pole barn and you were to put one in, that that wasn't, that was not extending the nonconformity. To me, that would be a tangible physical structure that wasn't there before in a nonconforming use.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, have other questions, but nothing.
Okay. Well, this time then, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. As a reminder, if anybody is going to speak, please keep your comments to the ordinance that's in front of us related to ag lands, and please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anybody wishing to speak, don't be shy. Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Sandy Hall, 7080 57th Street. I just want to say that we bought our twenty acres back in the nineties and met with the county, you know, discussing the use, and we were told that the off-site landscaping was a permitted use, nothing about being an accessory to a nursery at that time. Nothing was said to us about it being the accessory, but we do have a registered nursery, so we're okay there, but I'm just going back into some history. What's happening is people are buying property in ag zone areas, and they're building their beautiful estate homes and then getting upset when a permitted-use ag industry is established on the properties next to them. They should have done their due diligence and know what is in the area and what business or entity could be built in their areas. Next, a homeowner will complain when a dairy farm builds next to them and they don't like the smell. So what industry is next on the chopping block? I just want you to think about, you know, what precedent this is setting. The proposed ordinance removes everything about landscaping services. And I just want to make mention that the proposed ordinance goes against the original staff recommendation, goes against what the Ag Council recommended. And also, y'all were talking about the grandfather clause. I'm not sure exactly how that works legally, but I just know the proposed ordinance itself does not refer anything to grandfathering in any businesses. There's many of us companies that have been here four years, following all the rules, and we shouldn't be penalized. And landscaping companies in this county provides thousands of jobs. And right now, what's happening is billion-dollar companies are buying up local companies. And yes, those employees are still contributing to the community, but the rest of the dollars earned are leaving this county. So I would, I think the county would want to help and do everything they could to help promote employment in Indian River County, support us small businesses, and not stifle us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? You may speak, but keep your, and only if you have comments related to the list of uses in agricultural zoning districts.
David Surtar, Fruitland Park, Florida. I have, I'm retired down here, and I was a business owner up north. My wife owned flower shops, first woman in the state of Illinois. Small business means a lot to be inducted into Rotary the night we met. In fact, she was the cover girl for Mayor Terry Wethler, a lawyer, right now the mayor of Libertyville, Illinois.
Again.
And I want you to know, my cousins run a agriculture landscaping business in Barrington, Illinois. And I played against Gary Hallberg. He's on the senior tour. Barrington, Illinois, very ethnic, very high level, but you got to support the businesses. She has two hundred and fifty employees, and they snowplow, and you got to keep thinking of those people.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate that.
If I have three minutes, I take every minute of it.
All right. Anybody else from the public? Welcome, sir. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Wow. Good morning. My name is David Higginson. I live at fifty-three seventy-five Hammerstone Court in Mickle, Florida. However, I do work in Indian River County, and I actually work for a local landscape company. And I've been with this company, I've been with now for seven years, and I've observed that Indian River County is a very special place. Let's face it, our barrier island is manicured. It is taken care of by many landscape companies. So I'm asking, as you go forward and devise codes that could restrict the growth of the landscape industry, keep in mind, we have to have a place to conduct business to be able to operate in Indian River County. And as it is true that these larger companies are moving in and buying up the small mom-and-pop shops, they still need a place to operate, whether they lease the land or own the land. And I think it's important that going forward, when you're devising restrictions on land use, you take into consideration that obviously everybody has a right to make a living, and we all have to live here together and do what's right. But I I feel that going forward, not to have anything bad in the past that may have restricted the growth, but going forward, I think there has to be some kind of game plan that allows landscape companies to operate. And if you drive around and look at the landscape companies that are on ten or twenty acres, if you look at their frontage along the street, they take pride and they take care of their properties. I'm actually a general maintenance man for a per company, and I can tell you that our employees are conscientious of being quiet in the morning if we're next to a residential area. We purposely have our driveways set up sometimes where we avoid a residential house next door out of consideration. And and I just feel that if you could talk to the people that own landscape companies in this area, they would all agree, we do what we can to minimize the impact of our business on the acreage that we have. And I'm glad to hear that there are a process in going forward of grandfathering in the ones that are already there and taking care of them. But just keep in mind that we don't want to bite the hand that feeds us and respect that all these condominiums, all these HOAs need to be taken care of by a landscape company. And they're not going to drive from southern Fort Pierce to operate in northern Indian River County. They have to be located in Indian River County, and I would hope that you would work with them to provide them a place to operate legally and within the community in good graces. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, welcome.
Spencer Simmons, I own the property in seventy-three fifty thirty-seventh Street. I think we're still missing the point here. We're not looking at landscaping businesses, we are lawn mowing businesses. I believe the county ordinances give you areas that the landscaping services are as a principal contractor trade type of use and is to be in heavy commercial or industrial districts where storage of vehicles, equipment, and various supplies and materials are allowed. I remember that the last hearing, one of the commissioners says that we want to be sure we're growing plants, not trucks. And this is what this was about. We're growing trucks out there. We're not growing plants. If it is a legitimate landscaping business that grows trees, that grows plants, and does take them out and does the planting, nobody's got anything against it. Nobody's saying that we can't, that I'm going to build a house next to a dairy farm. That's a legitimate agricultural business. Another commissioner said a few months ago, I mean, I've been here for a year and a half. I've been to every meeting. I've been to every ag commission meeting. I actually paid for the Simmons Campbell amendment to be sure that this was being addressed properly. One of the commissioners also said that when he got up in the morning and went and mowed his grass, he didn't say, honey, I'm out here farming, because this is not farming. This is off-site landscaping services, and I wouldn't even really call it landscaping. It's going out and mowing other people's grasses. Yes, it's great that our island out there has great maintenance, but everybody that lives in the ag district, and yes, there's a few businesses out there and people build their beautiful homes, but my understanding is ag is designated one home per acre, one home or one home per five acres, one home per ten acres, or one home per twenty acres. It's designated by housing, not buildings and trucks. So yes, people, they move out there, and there might have been a business that had been there previously, and they complained. This is not exactly what we're talking about. Understanding that the pole barn situation was another issue I felt that wasn't quite addressed properly, somebody going out and building a commercial building without proper regulations. I am a general contractor. You go through a lot of hoops. You need your your drawings approved by by fire marshals, by county staff in the building department to ensure you're building it properly. So I call it an ag building. I build a commercial building, and I have no regulations. And now we're talking about being able to expand and adding more trucks and saying, well, it's grandfathered in. Again, I think we need to remember that this is about adding trucks or adding trees. If if the business is out there and they want to expand their tree farm, nobody said anything. They want to expand planting flowers or whatever agricultural product, nobody is discussing about changing any of that. It's about taking a commercial business that should be in heavy industrial or heavy commercial or industrial and putting it out into ag because somebody's figured out a loophole to get through there. So I I think that the ordinance was was drafted as as best as can be, trying to keep everybody happy, but there is other people than a handful of businesses that want to move out there. Again, we do have the one little thing here I'd like to just place here, if we can, on High and dry, well-maintained, seven-point-eight acre, ready for all your agricultural needs and perfect for a landscaper with lots of trucks. No HOA, adjacent twelve acres. This is what I am trying to help avoid for everybody in Indian River County, that people are not just moving their industrial businesses so they don't have to pay the proper property taxes that they would in the heavy industrial or have or industrial or heavy commercial, that they're not just moving out there, avoiding the taxes, avoiding having to spend the amount of money they would for a property that was zoned properly. So this is something, this is what this is really about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Miller. I own property on A Street, sixty-fifty A Street, Anco Land, have a landscape company out there. I think it was eight years ago I came and decided I was going to move on to my ten-acre parcel that I had purchased out there. There was no just moving trucks onto the property, building pole barns, there was none of that. It was a matter of going through the zoning commission, working with Roland, site plan had to be, you know, procured through the through the county. All the things that you're proposing were done, okay? Everything was approved, the buffer, the zoning, everything was handled. We were approved. We had to change some things. We had to make it, you know, a much more aggressive boundary on one side because there was a home there. We did everything the county asked us to do to become compliant with the zoning. We employ sixty employees. I have sixty families relying on me. There's a hundred employees right there, there's another fifty over there. We employ a bunch of people in this county, and we do a really good job. We we're not about disrupting the community. We're not about, I have high-end homes right next to me. I'm not about disrupting them. I work with them. If you had them in here, they'd be going, yeah, he's got a great buffer. I don't even see his guys. My trucks move in there in the morning, I move out down A Street, nobody even knows that, nobody even knows I'm there. This is a zoning issue and a planning issue, okay? More a planning issue than a zoning issue. If it's proposed correctly and followed through upon by the owner, this is not an issue. This is a witch hunt, okay? A witch hunt by disgruntled homeowners is what we have here. This isn't about zoning. This is about a witch hunt. You know, I don't want to see trucks on my road. You knew that, you knew it was a possibility. When you, when you went out there, you knew it was a possibility, okay? Again, we're employing people, we're doing a good job of it, we're buffering, we're growing plants. You can't grow plants, you can't grow palm trees on a heavy industrial site. They don't grow in concrete, last time I checked. You can't grow a twenty-foot queen palm in a pot. You can't grow a 20-foot queen palm in a pot. It doesn't work, okay? So if you want to drive these jobs out of this county, into St. Lucie County, and have all of this traveling coming back, your lawn care needs are going to go up, your lawn care needs are going to go up. Do it tastefully, have the planning commission do their job, and this is a mute point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? All right, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair. I just want to look at how we got here, you know, because we, this commission, this sitting commission, has stood for economic development for a very long time. We still do. We recognize industry this morning, and we have been geared for a reduction of over-government of our citizens and the community. Now we get to, so we got here. We got here because someone lodged a very serious complaint, and it was addressed. It was addressed by our code enforcement team. It took some time. I will acknowledge and recognize that the site property that was complained about did not do everything according to plans, did not do everything according to expectation, and fell short of their obligation to the standards in which are provided in Indian River County. They were corrected. I see our code enforcement director is here, and I'm sure he can testify that they were brought into compliance. Let's talk about an industry, we've, I've heard a slight mockery about landscaping, like lawn mowing. I don't think landscaping is lawn mowing, and I don't think that lawn mowing or landscaping is agriculture. But we've had this in existence for so many years, and these businesses have been operating with limited negative exposure. Yes, some people don't like a few extra trucks coming down the road. People are getting along. This has been happening. It represents hundreds and hundreds of jobs. Brought to light during COVID that so many people are out of work, that I was very happy to know that this industry is intact. So getting back to what we're doing, the individual who complained was living in a gated community during this process, a gated, protected community, isolated. I know, I know where he lived. And then he moved to another gated community, protected and isolated, without any of these things happening. Buys a piece of property, wants to develop, as this business was working and starting, and decides to move, to develop on that property and move to that property and having a beautiful homestead there. The challenge is, you're moving into an environment that is existing and has been longstanding. I made an analogy, and it was quickly rebuked and refuted. I'll make it again. You move next to an airport, and the first prop washer here, you complain about the airport noise. Let's close the airport still while we're at it. Let's expand it. I don't see the sense in what we're doing. This has started about a year ago. We've had a lot of time to think about it. There was a benefit to COVID. We've had some time to revisit this, digest it. I supported a public hearing, but now more than ever, I can't see any action by this commission to reduce the livelihood and the likelihood for success for any industry. And I feel that this has gone beyond the level of tolerance that anybody should anticipate or deserves. This is, there are businesses that are operating, and I started to think, where are they going to go? I mean, after all, we heard if they do a little pole barn maneuver, I got to shut you down. You take a little hiatus, got to shut you down. We're talking about livelihoods. So those livelihoods, because someone moved from a gated, protected community and now moved out west, now wants it to be like that gated, protected community lifestyle and not what it was for so many years. We're allowing somebody to change and affect so many of our citizens, our hard-working citizens, because we want to, we're going to change an ordinance. And I guess the young couple will be very happy living in their home, and then many other hundreds of young couples who are sustained by the landscaping business, they will not be so happy, and they will not be living in a home. They might be in a tent or in subsidized housing. What are we doing here? I just couldn't see the logic at this point. And allowing someone to have all of us change our regulations so that we can have a happy little life, I don't even want to support this any further.
Excuse me, please, no, no.
You know, and again, I heard, what's next? Yeah, what is next? Okay? Let's, you know, I don't know how many, we don't have too many milk farms here, we don't have any hog farms here, but they're allowed to develop, and then what is it? Oh, no, we can't have that. We never bought into this. Well, it's allowable, and so are those vehicles. And you know what? In so many instances, we have more than, more than a half a dozen rather sizable, successful landscaping businesses, I will say landscaping, not lawn mowing, landscaping, we call them lawnzambones, but that's about, they are a landscaping institution. They also provide trees, shrubs, maintenance, development, and you know what? When you look around Indian River County, you know that we have quite a few successful ones. Where are they going to go? A young man said they'll go to St. Lucie. Absolutely correct. There is nowhere to go. Where are they going to go? I can ask planning, zoning, where can they go? They would go to a place like Old Dixie, maybe? They would be allowed, and then there would be more restrictions, and they would also be paying a lot of money. And there's not a lot of wide-open space on Old Dixie Highway if you haven't traveled it recently. So you can't take a business and misplace it somewhere else and say, well, I hope you survive. Thank you very much. Have a good day. We've taken their taxes. Yes, I heard that it's agricultural taxes, yes, but they pay in so many ways, and they provide in so many ways. And to isolate it for one little hit and to say, wow, you know, they really bend in the rules. No, they're not bending the rules. That's what we have developed. What's bending the rules is people moving out west and wanting the gated community environment to be out there. I don't believe it's going to happen. I hope it doesn't happen, because we have a beautiful patina here in Indian River County where we do have coexistence, where there is agricultural endeavors and business endeavors, and then we have a commercial area, and we have large expansive residential areas. And I think that planning and zoning has done a fine job. Our planners, the forefathers of these planners have done an excellent job. Why are we changing it? We're changing it because somebody moved from a gated community and doesn't like all that stuff. We're doing that? I'm very uncomfortable with that. So I'd like to make a motion that we cease any further endeavor in changing this ordinance, changing the existing ordinance, and go back to the customary way at this time.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Flesher with a second by Commissioner Zork. Commissioners, any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm not sure what part of grandfathering Commissioner Flesher didn't understand, but all the people that spoke today are not going to be impacted by this. They're not going to have to move, they're not going to have to lay people off, they're not have to go live in tents or anything, okay? They are grandfathered in, they can continue to do exactly what they're doing today, and this will not affect them going forward. So I don't know where you're getting all this stuff, but I think you're totally off base with it. You keep referring to one person, but when we had these earlier hearings, many people that lived on 37th Street testified, and many of them had bought their land out there and built on their way before the commercial lawn service company came in. So I think you need to look at the bigger picture. It's not just one person that wants a gated community lifestyle, but a lot of people out there bought their land and built their homes before this operation moved in. There are also commercial lawn service companies that do have their headquarters on commercial property. I know of one off of Oslo Road, it's a very big operation, and they're paying the full tax bill for commercial property, and these other lawn service companies are not paying the same equivalent. So you've got a different playing field. We don't have a level playing field treating those businesses the same. So when I look at this, landscaping services are still allowed if they're growing the plants, and then they're going to take them out and plant them. So for all these future landscaping companies you're worried about, they can continue to do that on ag land. They just can't open up and operate a lawn mowing service on ag land. And I think that's the bottom line here, and that's what we're talking about, is that lawn mowing service has nothing to do with right to farm, it has nothing to do with ag, nothing to do with Florida Ag Act. It's a commercial operation, and it should be based on commercial property. And to me, that's pretty clear, cut and dried, so I'll be opposing the motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Commissioner Zork, any comments?
No comments, ma'am.
All right, we do have a motion by Commissioner Flesher with a second by Commissioner Zork. There's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to two. And with that, we'll take a five-minute recess. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify.
No recess.
I just want to clarify. This means that this ordinance that was being proposed in the public hearing we had today, which was closed, is not proceeding any further. Staff will not be bringing any more ordinances on this issue to the board, and this matter is concluded.
Correct.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll take a five-minute recess. Let's see. We are going to move on to county administrators' matters. Proposed schedule, Board of County Commission 2021, already 2021 meeting dates.
Yep, we are planning for 2021, so we have before you today the proposed 2021 meeting schedule, which is basically the same, the way that we're doing it now. We meet every Tuesday, with the exception of the last Tuesday of the month, take a little break there after the July 13th meeting, have the one meeting in August, and then the first meeting the week after Labor Day. Also, one thing of note, we have two meetings in December this proposed, which is a little different than the current year. We actually have three meetings, but that next meeting would be December 21st, so it's kind of like that week of Christmas, so we have elected not to include that. So if the Board has any questions, staff recommends the approval of the proposed 2021 meeting dates.
All right, are there any questions on the 2021 meeting dates?
Move staff recommendation.
No. I have a motion and a second, and Jason, we did take spring break off?
Yes, that third week of March is off.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to community development, consideration of Amendment One to Coronavirus Relief Fund Agreement with Florida Housing Finance Corporation. Phil, welcome.
On August 18th, we received 572,301 from the Coronavirus Relief Fund Cares Act. That was to be used for assistance for people delinquent on mortgages, also behind on rent due to the economic implications of the COVID crisis. We give out aid at $4,500 per person, up to $4,500, that'd be $1,500 per month over a three-month period. We've established a portal for applications, we've established help centers. Bill Shute has done his usual excellent job in seeing to all the detail with a lot of help from Kristin and Mike Zito and others. So at this point, FHFC would like to reward us with an additional 300,919 for this program. That requires an amendment to our existing agreement, that's why we're here today. To date, we have 189,000, pardon me, 189 applications with another 600 pending for the existing amount of help, so we certainly can use this additional help. I think the demand is out there. And we will need a motion to approve this amendment to the original agreement.
All right, Commissioners, questions?
Just, Phil, how are the applications going? Are the people getting them mostly filled out, or are we having to send a lot back, you know, for more information? Or how is it going, just on?
Half and half. Some of them come out of the hopper, almost perfect. That would have to be the minority. Of the 30, Bill and I, we camped out one night and did about 30, and I'd have to say about 10% were all right, ready to go, just about. Maybe another 10% or 20% needed one thing, they missed a signature on a line. It's a governmental process, so it's regulated with probably eight different forms. We're trying to pare that down best we can while still maintaining enough documentation to survive an audit and make sure that these are legitimate people getting help. I'd say about 10% come in pretty, almost ready to go, about another 10%, 20% need a minimal amount of help. The rest, I think we need to, you know, help them find documentation on how they can prove they were affected, income statements, what would qualify as good documentation, but that's probably the best assessment I can give you.
Okay, so then the ones that need a little additional help, any idea of how many days it's taken? Because you've got to send it back to them, I guess, get more information, that's got to come back and be reviewed. Are we looking like a week or three weeks, what kind of?
It's hard to give you a cumulative amount of hours per client, because a lot of times it's just, hi, could you tell me, you know, where I can get this from your boss, that kind of thing? I'd probably say, Bill, it'll probably take about a week or so to close out a single application once we start one. Yeah, Bill's nodding his head.
Okay, all right, thank you. Madam Chair, go ahead and move staff recommendation.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. There's no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to utility services. The first item is reclaimed water agreement between Indian River County and Sea Oaks. Welcome.
Good morning, thank you, Chair. For the record, Vincent Burke, Director of Utility Services. We have before you a draft of the reclaimed water agreement between Indian River County and Sea Oaks property owners. I'd like to thank Pam Dawson and Jim Fortier with Sea Oaks for their tireless work and effort to try to help staff identify some valves and infrastructure on the property. And then Pam was kind enough to set up a conference call Zoom with me and their board on September 8th to go over the agreement, answer any questions that they had. They signed the document, and we're here to present the agreement, which I'll summarize. It is a phased approach, there's three phases, phase one, two, and three. The first phase is about 0.178 million gallons a day, or 17,800 gallons per day for their tennis court facility. And then it steps up for the east side, phase two, and then the west side for phase three. There is a map attached to the agreement, Exhibit A, that denotes the legal description that we went over with the county surveyor, and thank you to the county legals office for helping to draft this standard agreement. So it is an agreement for a 10-year term. We certainly would encourage Sea Oaks to take on more water, and so these dates are not set in stone, so if they wanted to accelerate their timeframe, by all means, they're more than willing to do that. We do have an enticement clause in there that states if they take more than 500 million gallons, or, I'm sorry, .5 million gallons, 500,000 gallons a day, then there'll be no charge above that, so that if for some reason their pond levels are low, unlike today where they're pretty high, they would shut down. Certainly, they'd be able to take on some more water and not have to pay for that. So the existing rate is 21 cents per thousand gallon. That would be an effect for this agreement. And I think I've covered all the highlights. We do have some limited funding that we have to offset with proposed revenue that we hope to expect, so we did just a quick analysis, assuming all phases were online, to offset the small amount of tank maintenance and electricity that would cover our costs to be able to send that water to Sea Oaks. Certainly available for any questions the Board may have.
Are there any questions for Vinnie?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Solari with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Oh, anybody from the public? Anybody from Zoom? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to the resolution to adopt water, sewer, and reclaimed rates, fees, and other charges.
Thank you. This is just to formalize what the Board had previously approved in the summertime for the fiscal year 2021 budget year, confirmed on the 23rd of September for next year, to memorialize the resolution to adopt the water, sewer, and reclaimed rates, consistent with a CPI increase of about 1.54%. So we attached the rate resolution as part of your agenda packet, as well as a comparison between the existing rates and the proposed CPI of 1.54, so that the Board could see the differences between the two. We have kept some of the fees stagnant or stable, just for ease of computation, and it's a little bit easier to let our folks know about, say, for instance, the current deposit of $50 per ERU. And we are not recommending any change or increase to the impact fees as part of this analysis. So this is really just for the consumption portion of the water and/or sewer. We estimate about $450,000 for additional revenue that would be captured by this proposed increase. And as noted in the agenda item, we plan to reinvest those dollars into RNR and utility infrastructure-related projects to keep up our level of service. Certainly available for any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions of staff?
Move staff recommendation.
I just want to reinforce one thing. You noted that the additional 1.54% is going to raise about $450,000. And sometimes you speak a little fast, so I don't know if the public heard that you were going to anticipate spending all of that in renewal and replacement, as opposed to some utilities which take that money and put it into the general fund, and then leave their system grossly.
Under maintained.
Under maintained, yes, thank you. So we're basically taking care of today's problems today, rather than today's problems sometime 10 or 20 years in the future. I just want to applaud you, because living in an area where it's done differently, the county generally are not looking at the same type of problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, there was a motion by Commissioner O'Brien with a second, is that Commissioner Fleischer? All right. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to county attorneys' matters, first being City of Vero Beach Water, Wastewater, and Reclaimed Water franchise agreement.
Thank you very much. On September 15th, the City of Vero Beach staff sent over a draft of a proposed water and sewer franchise agreement over to Indian River County staff. Although staff does have several comments on the draft, we wanted to present the proposal to the full Board for input before we responded to the city. The key issue that we've identified is that the city has proposed to change the current rate structure from going from county rates for the unincorporated areas to city rates in the unincorporated areas. City staff noted in follow-up conference call that they had with us that they did not want to limit their ability to change the rates or set the rates in the future. City staff noted concerns about potential new sewer plant or wastewater plant, requirements of the new Senate Bill 712, and what impact that would have. And then finally, they acknowledged sort of older system issues, such as the moorings area, where they were going to need to spend money on improving the facilities. So between those types of issues, they were looking to keep flexible their ability to change the rate structure, as opposed to holding it consistent with the county rate structure. County staff is concerned kind of about the inequity in the system or the rate structure. You have customers in the town of Indian River shores, they have a franchise agreement with the City of Vero Beach, and in that deal, the City of Vero Beach has agreed to hold their rates for those citizens at county rates. And certainly, county staff would like to see that those in other parts of unincorporated Indian River County get that same treatment. And I think that's, those are my comments just on that issue. Like I said, there are other smaller, detailed issues that we will respond, but certainly wanted to get a sense of the Board before we responded. With that, just looking for the Board to provide any other guidance or insight on the draft before we respond to the city. So thank you very much, and turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments?
Ah, I do have a couple of comments on this one. It's unfortunate that the county, the city has taken the position it has. I'll note, first I want to thank staff, and not just present staff here, but staff has been trying to get a franchise agreement which would protect county customers for closing in on a decade now. Alan Plakwicz, when he was that county attorney, worked on this. There's a nice paper he wrote of the legal implications of the county franchise power dated January 13th, 2012. We did, and one other thing, interestingly, in 2014, I'm just going to quote from a city council meeting from the minutes, Mayor Winger noted that the county will be making a presentation to the council at their next meeting on the water, wastewater, reclaimed water franchise agreement. His suggestion would be to grant the customers of the county water, wastewater, and reclaim utility the same deal as Indian River shores, and to utilize the same rate structure that the county provided to the City of Sebastian. He said, so that deal fell apart on other issues, and then basically the franchise agreement was put aside for a while while the city and county worked on the Vero electric system. But meanwhile, it's been clear that the city is going to be moving their wastewater treatment plant, and it's clear that rates for the citizens of the City of Vero Beach are going to go up substantially, though as far as I know, the city hasn't indicated exactly how high those rates are going to increase. So, you know, while it's understandable why the city of Vero Beach couldn't possibly go forward with a franchise agreement which would give the county customers city rates, it's unfortunately that the city has put itself in this position. Also note that the city has probably tens of millions of dollars in deferred maintenance in their water, wastewater, and reclaimed systems, which are going to have to be borne by customers. The plan itself, wastewater plan itself, as I understand it, is going to be costing somewhere between 50 and 60 million dollars. The water system that they have is going to also cost substantial amounts to get up to speed, so for a commissioner, the most important takeaway, I think, is that county customers served by the City of Vero Beach are within the next few years going to be paying significantly more for their services, the utility services, than other county customers served by the county. With that, I'd certainly recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that we have staff do whatever they possibly can to put county customers served by the City of Vero Beach on a path to get some reasonable accommodation going forward. The best thing, I believe, would be for them to end up becoming county customers, but there are state statutes right now which make that difficult. So, as I'll be leaving in just six weeks, I tried to work with staff to get this problem done while I was here, failed miserably, I see, but did want to make sure that the commission was completely aware that this is a problem which you're going to have to be working on in the future. It's, to me, very similar to the electric. Just like with the electric system, the City of Vero Beach transferred millions and millions of dollars from the electric system to its general fund, resulting in higher rates and deferred maintenance. The same thing has happened with its water, sewer, and wastewater utilities. They've transferred millions and millions of dollars to their general fund while shorting renewal and replacement, leaving their entire system in what I would consider to be a questionable position right now. So I feel for you, but I will literally share your pain, as in the future, I pay much higher water and wastewater rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Brien, do you have anything?
Just, so Dylan, what would our options be? You know, obviously, one, we can go back to the city and ask them for some type of commitment to keep the rates low. The other option, I guess, we have is we could start proceedings to try to take over those customers, I guess. What's your feeling on which way we should go here?
So we, several years ago, as Commissioner Solari referenced, we had received a letter from the City of Vero Beach Outside Council stating why, all the reasons why they had the right and the authority to serve the areas that they do. We got a letter from our outside council with Neighbors Giblin stating all the reasons why the county would be able to take over the area served by the City of Vero Beach in the unincorporated areas after the expiration of the franchise agreement. Really, from a policy perspective, the question to the Board is, do you want to see if we can work this out? And then a third option, I guess, is not only just kind of this sort of legal battle, but then sort of legislative battle and what could happen in Tallahassee. So there are a lot of different prongs to the issue. From my perspective, would see From my perspective, would seek guidance from the board as to, I mean, do you want us to explore legislation? Do you want us to explore these sort of legal paths? Do you want us to explore just further negotiation with the city? Based upon those issues, do you want to simply say, this isn't really the time to fight this issue and we'll accept city rates? I mean, they're just, those are really big policy questions.
And I guess, and this is a question maybe for Vinny. I know we had talked about taking the city's sewer treatment over and running it through our system, and that would eliminate the cost of having the city build a whole new wastewater treatment plant. But Vinny, is that feasible at all, or did we decide that that just wasn't going to work?
Again, Vincent Burke, Utility Director. So Rob Bolton did an analysis of trying to capture all the flow being brought to where their water plant is right now. So in essence, abandoning the plant on, the wastewater plant on the river, bring all the flow to a location at the, basically at their water plant, and having a system that would then convey that either to our west regional or central plant. We were not able to send all the flow to central because that would trip a threshold required by the DEP, which says if you exceed 75% of your capacity, you then have to submit plans to expand it. So we kind of proportioned the flow approximately to either send wastewater out west and north, but then also we had to then build redundant parallel lines to bring the reuse water back to serve their customers on the barrier island. So I think part of the analysis was the actual CapEx or the capital expenditure that would be required to do that was pretty expensive. It was similar to what their new costs would be at the proposed site. But then also, it would then be necessary for us to expand our plants because we would be over that 75% threshold. So then there was additional dollars that we, the county, would have to spend as a result of taking on the city customers. So while we do have capacity at west and central to be able to do that, we wanted to make sure that we were not unnecessarily placing City of Vero Beach first to take on their customers, but then also reserving capacity for those folks that have, you know, say, like water and sewer ERUs. And so the price to, to answer your question, the price to do the physical infrastructure as well as to replace the capacity, something like 80 some odd million dollars based on the analysis that was done. So that was presented to the city council by Mr. Bolton, and I think the city council then just made a resolution to continue to proceed to move forward with their plans over there.
So that doesn't sound like that would be a feasible alternative then to pursue. So we're back to either just negotiating or asking the city to come up with something to protect the out-of-city customers, the legislative fix. Although, in my mind, and we talked about this yesterday, if we, any legislative fix impacting a city, the Florida League of Cities is going to be probably very actively engaged. And I don't know if this would be something that the Florida Association of Counties would want to really jump in, and I don't think this is a fight they want to take on just for a small, kind of a local city-county issue like this. So I'm not sure how successful a legislative fix would be. So kind of in my mind, we're down to, you know, I guess, three options. The do-nothing option, which is to just accept the proposed franchises the city has presented and not have any protection for the out-of-city customers. Actually, I guess it's two. Well, I guess two would be ask the city to reconsider and come up with something, or three, to proceed with a potential, I guess you could call it a hostile takeover of those customers. So given all that, and I certainly, I certainly do agree with Commissioner Solari that the out-of-city customers in the unincorporated part of the county probably will be facing higher water and sewer rates sometime in the future. Going after the whole system, I think, would be extremely costly, and as Commissioner Davis always said, you know, sometimes the juice isn't worth the squeeze. And then I'm hopeful that, over time, that maybe the Vero City Council will have new members, new council members, that have a bigger vision, a bigger view of the future that can work with us and will be able to do things where it is mutually beneficial to both parties. So from a policy point of view, I would just say, okay, let's go back to the city one more time, ask them to reconsider, do something to protect the out-of-city rate payers. But in the bottom line, if that isn't successful, then I think, in my mind, we would just accept the franchise as it is and keep working with them going forward under, you know, mutually respectful process and not get into an adversarial process. So that's kind of just my intibet.
Commissioner O'Brien, yeah, I think what we could do is we could go back to them looking for some concessions, maybe. It seems they're not going to, I don't think they're going to reconsider city versus county rates, but we could have some protections, no rate increases more than X amount over a certain period of time. One stopping off point I could see is that they could stay on county rates through the end of the current Indian River Shores franchise could be a stopping off point, because I believe their intention is to change that arrangement once their first period ends there. So we could look at some options like that, just that would give them flexibility in the longer range, but provide some protection for.
I would concur with those ideas. I think that would be a very good option. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Zork, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Fletcher? No? All right. I agree with the gentleman, so does that provide you with what you need direction-wise?
Yeah, that's fine. Question, I didn't hear that message back.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to, and you didn't need a motion or anything on that, right, Dylan? Okay. Then we'll move on to Indian River County Hospital District and Indian River County Right-of-Way Dedication Agreement.
Thank you very much. 37th Street is a vital corridor in Indian River County, has the primary access point for the Cleveland Clinic and a lot of our other medical facilities here in Indian River County. 37th Street is approaching its capacity, and there are certainly challenges that we would have to face in order to widen 37th Street. So per the board direction, staff has been working on and exploring a roadway path that would connect from Aviation Boulevard on the west side of US-1, then turning north to connect to 37th Street and then eventually up to 41st Street. As part of that direction, county staff has negotiated an agreement with the hospital district in which the hospital district will convey right-of-way that is in the hands of the district and hand it over to the county. That will then be utilized as part of this path to connect from Aviation Boulevard up to eventually 41st Street. Now, this is a little awkward because usually you exchange something for something else, but the exchange here is actually that they then also give us 36th Street for us to then own and maintain. I can tell you why, the reason why that makes sense in this deal from the hospital district perspective is the hospital district is not in the business of maintaining roads, building roads, improving roads. And so for them, this has always been a private road that's been viewed as something, as a responsibility for them and not within their wheelhouse. So what they're looking really at the end of the day to do is to say, county, we will hand you for free, convey to you what you need for 37th, but what we, or for 11th Drive, but what we really need for you to really take on 36th Street as a public road and then be responsible for maintenance of that. And so that made sense for both the staff and the county staff, the hospital district staff as well. Hospital district staff had brought this agreement to their board on September 17th and was approved by the hospital district at that time. County Attorney's Office recommends that the board approve the contract as presented, and certainly I'm available for any questions. So thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions of staff?
One question. Dylan, if we go through with this, would we be able to rename 36th Street to Rich Bierka Boulevard? Because I think this is probably one of the really things Rich has really been driving to get done, and would really make him happy to have it named after him, I think.
Actually, at the hospital district meeting, the hospital district staff had recommended renaming it Rich Bierka Drive.
Perfect, okay.
But unfortunately, that motion failed, so it was not incorporated into the proposed agreement. Back to the board.
New staff recommendation?
Second, and I have a question, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Zork.
Rich, on that, I know about three years ago, we had put together a number that worked through one of the hospital members in trying to get 36th Street at a different occasion, so I'm glad that this has worked out. What about the north-south right-of-way south of 36th Street to where the new road will connect on the west side of Vero Orthopedics Building, is that? I was thinking that was also private right-of-way south of 36th Street.
Rich Bierka, Public Works Director. Yeah, so we have the sketch and description. They're giving us the right-of-way for 11th Drive all the way to their south property line.
Okay.
We incorporated that into there because we know we want to punch it through, we just don't know where we're going to punch it further south. But they were amenable to giving us that right-of-way for all the way down there, so we won't have to go back to them again. We're set up to keep going.
Okay. And then secondarily, when we do any of the physical construction work on 11th or any of the other roads, part of the reason to get 36th Street was it's in, when we're taking patients to the hospital, that last quarter mile beats them pretty rough, as well as the turnoff US-1 is between the curb and other things, it's, you get quite a significant jostling when they're turning right to go east on 36. If we could program in either whatever your recommendations are, Millings or something to get that roadway smoothed out to give the patients a better ride that last quarter mile up to the emergency room ramp, I think that would be. They would appreciate it for those who haven't had that ride. I hope you never have it, but it's significantly bumpy for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from commissioners? Anybody from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none, we do have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien with a second by Commissioner Zork. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and I also want to thank Rich Bierka and both Phil Madsen, who've been so instrumental in getting this done and attending the various discussions with the hospital district. And also just thank the hospital district for being a great partner on this deal.
Yes, it is good. It makes projects easier when you have good partners. All right, so our wrap-up today is going to be led off by Commissioner Solari.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Take your mic, please. Thank you. Once back, some of us were talking about another conservation lands bond referendum. With about 30% of the land in the county now conservation lands and off the tax roll, it's debatable whether or not more single-purpose conservation land purchases are necessary. What is necessary is the work required to stop the damage that has been done to our land and waters and to return them to a healthier state. In short, while we may not need more conservation lands, we need to properly conserve and restore those lands and waters that we do have. This will clearly be a very expensive project. Just to return the lagoon to an acceptable state will cost well over $100 million. And I don't believe we can possibly wait until we get an acceptable BMAP, nor should we take the 20 years possibly allowed by a new BMAP to restore the Indian River Lagoon, excuse me, the Indian River County portion of the lagoon. As we have been for well over the past decade, we should continue to be a leader in restoring the lagoon and other county conservation lands owned by the county to better health. My suggestion is that over the next year, as the Board of County Commissioners continues its work on the Indian River Lagoon Plan and thinks about the future of the county's conservation lands, it considers a conservation bond referendum, the proceeds of which would be used for capital projects and the land necessary for them to conserve and restore the Indian River Lagoon to a healthier state and to better conserve and protect the conservation lands that the county now owns. I want to go back to one point, the idea of single-purpose projects or purchases of conservation lands. Back in the last bond referendum, we raised $50 million in bond funds, bought $67 million of lands, but most, not all, most of those lands were single-purpose lands. Many of them are lands or easements out to the west of town, which most citizens have never even seen yet. I believe that going forward, things are so expensive that we've got to basically have multiple purchases, excuse me, multiple uses for almost any property. I think that the Osprey Acres Project and the new West Wastewater Wetlands Property are great examples of the type of path forward we need to take where with one land, we get multiple purposes. People who visited Osprey Acres, which is really accessible to most of the county, know that it's, first of all, restored what used to be an old citrus grove that but for our purchase would have been a local development right now. It's also restoring the health of our waters by taking out nutrients, and it's a great recreation area now. The future of the West Wastewater Wetlands Property is similar. That was a purchase of 243 acres. The cost of the land alone was just under $6 million, and the cost to develop it properly to do the work it needs to do for the utility department and to restore the land for use as a recreation area and conservation land will cost somewhere between another $5 and $10 million. So that just gives you some idea of scale and scope. But both projects restore lands while removing nutrients while adding recreation opportunities to the people of this county, and they are, for the most part, accessible to the people of this county, which I think is a great thing. So I do want to make very clear that I'm not suggesting that the BCC commit to this referendum at this time. Today, I'd just like to make a motion that is simply to direct staff to consider how the funds from, say, a $50 million conservation bond referendum leveraged to perhaps $100 million with, through grants and other monies, might be utilized in the most appropriate and cost-effective manner to improve the health of the lagoon and all property owned by the county that's listed as conservation lands. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there's any questions on what my intended.
Yes, and I agree, having multiple purposes for sites, the single use, especially the uses where you, the public can only visit the site one day a year, to me, those are, I guess it was great when it was bought, at least some people thought it was, but that limited use is not, doesn't get you very far. If you would consider in your description also having, at least where the county would entertain if any P3 opportunities became available, we have some large property owners that may want to do something to where it's, maybe it's three or four different uses in something, but it may originate with a private side as well as a public component, and who knows what else that, you know, that could be brought forward, but.
I just didn't get what your, what type of opportunity?
Oh, P3 agreements.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, my, it includes lands, so I anticipate the idea that for some projects, we would need lands which we don't presently own. You know, we had to get the 243 acres for the west water treatment plan. One example of how it might be used, and I don't want to promote anything, but the Corrigan property is located in an area that would probably be appropriate for other county facilities like utilities with the right type of public-private partnership. The Sebastian Improvement, because I don't want to leave just one, Sebastian Improvement District has lots of lands there, which would be great for, you know, finally doing that reversing in part the flow of waters from the canal to the west, which now, given the cost of these projects, is looking a lot more affordable. I think Jason is finally realizing that it's not quite as terrible as he might have thought at one time. But yes, I mean, those type of things where you look ahead, see what an area is going to need, and generate the best type of project is possible. But I just now want to start the process of thinking about it, and wide scope is great, but we are going ahead right now with the Indian River Lagoon Plan, so I think it's important to, you know, anticipate what the next steps will be now. And again, everybody knows how much I love certain bureaucracies, I don't believe we can wait on or anticipate much in the way of help from FDEP in this. We've taken a leadership stance in the past, and I believe that we need to continue that leadership process and that let other people follow us rather than us follow some other bureaucracy.
All right, thank you. With that, I'd be inclined to support.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I do want to, we can consider P3s. I just want us to be careful, depending on the use and the structure, it could jeopardize the tax-exempt status of the bond, so in anything, doesn't mean we can't do something that's a P3, but we have to be careful with the use, whether the bonds would be tax-exempt or not, kind of like.
And I think Commissioner Zork's, what he's trying to get at is working with our property owners and maybe not a strict P3 process, but some type of inclusion of those property.
I would call it just a P2.
Right.
Public-private. I mean, just understand that there are opportunities out there and make the best of the opportunities, consistent with all the legalities that we need to.
Understood.
And I would agree with you that the multi-use is really, the multi-use on these types of properties is the only way we're going to get where we need to be in the future realistically. So thank you for bringing this up. I think it's a great move and very, very much the next step of the lagoon plan and how we fund that.